I guess we have enough for a quorum.
We do have enough for a quorum.
Okay. Four o'clock's here, it is time to start this meeting. Is there any changes in the agenda?
No, we have one purpose here only today, and that's to discuss fireworks stands.
Okay. First thing we need to do is approve the summary of minutes from the February 3rd meeting. Need a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a small change.
Okay.
I was both here and gone last time. I was actually just gone. I was absent. Other than that...
So noted. We have a... Been approved, or seconded? All those approved? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass us. Okay, this is a public hearing. The next thing is application number two. It is application Z-11-1 filed by the Salina County City Planning Commission requesting an amendment to section 42-59D and Article 4 of the Salina zoning ordinance to add consumer fireworks stands as permitted temporary use within the city. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. This is an application for a text amendment, and we gave you a little bit of background there that since 1989, the city of Salina has had regulations in place that involve the regulation of merchandisers who sell items from temporary or movable structures such as recreational vehicles, trailers, tents, or in an open parking lot. These are transient vendors usually that set up and come and go. They might use a tent, they might use a trailer, they might just have a table and a stand, and so we have had a process for reviewing those, and we look at things such as making sure it's not in the right-of-way, and they're not setting up where they obstruct visibility at intersections, that they do have the owner's permission to be there. They are required to collect state sales tax, but that's not something that's enforced from a zoning standpoint. So, you know, you've seen these on corners. We've had tents with tool sales and electronic sales and plant sales, and you don't see it quite so commonly anymore, but seasonal Christmas tree lots that's set up in a parking lot. Those are all things that are covered by what we call a temporary use permit. Those are reviewed and administratively approved by staff. In January of this year, the city commission legalized both the sale and possession and the discharge of fireworks within the city limits. And so as part of that comes the sales aspect and how best to regulate the sale of fireworks within the city of Salina. Some of that is limited by what state law allows, but the... At a state level, there is a uniform period that begins on June 27th and ends on July 5th each calendar year that authorizes the sale of fireworks or consumer fireworks excluding bottle rockets and some other items that are allowed at the state level, and each locality can decide for themselves whether they want to be more restrictive on that sale. On January 5th of this year, the city commission approved an ordinance that did allow for the sale, possession, and discharge of fireworks, and we've kind of summarized that for you in our staff report. But the part we're going to focus on here today starts on page four of your report, and it deals with retail display and sale. And that section addresses the time and circumstances under which consumer fireworks can be sold, and there were some guidelines within that ordinance, and it's our role as staff and planning commissioners to kind of flesh that out. So, parameters, we would look at C-3, C-5, C-6, and C-7 zones and get some feedback from you on whether C-4, which is Central Business District, should be included in that. Take into consideration parking spaces eliminated, area parking impacts, off-street parking impacts, one facility per parcel, no facilities within 100 feet of residential zones, access points, sign location, power connections, things of that nature. The ordinance only allows them to be done in tents or canopies, not trailers, not temporary structures, not vacant permanent structures. The fee schedule that is set up has an application, initial application fee of $500, and if a permit is approved, then there's an additional base fee of $2,000 for a facility of 1,000 square feet or less, and then additional $250 per square foot with a maximum size of 2,500 square feet. So that is really our focus today, and again, your role is to work with us to develop and add an appropriate submitted requirements and locational requirements for the seasonal fireworks stands. And again, they are seasonal, and the season is relatively short, but the planning that goes into that in terms of finding locations and ordering merchandise and things like that, in many cases, has already begun. So, we were... We weren't approaching this with some leisure, but when we realized the number of calls we got about locations and indications from vendors that they'd already ordered their merchandise for their stands in Salina, we realized there was some urgency to get some ground rules established. So this is our... This is what we'd be looking at to see popping up around town, and Alyssa's already brought this to my attention and probably to your attention. That's something that we want to address through... As we address each of these subjects in terms of location and setbacks and signs and access and parking and all those things. So, John, if you want to go to that, the ordinance portion, I'll... We'll kind of wa... Do we have the attachment there that's the text amendment? There we go. Okay. This would be a... Just things that we would point out here. This is a recommendation point for you all to weigh in on. The initial parameters really focused, and these are probably the most suitable districts here. There's a question mark whether there are any places in the C-4 area, particularly the aspect that the city of Salina owns many of the parking lots in the downtown area, and I'm not sure that we would want to give up any spaces for that type of thing. So this might be inappropriate to include. The other thing is the local ordinance that was adopted put the sales period ending at July 4th even though the state law says June 27th to July 5th. So to be consistent with the local ordinance, we're saying that the consumer fireworks facility could be set up from June 27th to July 4th. They can only operate from tents and canopies. Maximum size is 2,400 square feet. We're suggesting, not suggesting, but that it has been decided that trailers and temporary buildings... I think I had a conversation with somebody who had a 8-by-40 trailer that they wanted to wheel in and set up and sell out of, and I said that's not going to be permitted. It's... The ordinance that's already adopted says tents only, so that is not an option.
Why couldn't they be in a vacant building? What's the theory behind that?
I think mostly the separation requirements and potential for fire spread or damage. What you'll see in our discussions here is that we're trying to get the stands or tents isolated in as much an open-air surrounded environment so they have as minimal impact as possible. And my illustration would be in the state of Iowa, fireworks have been banned since 1932, and the reason for that was because there was a fire started by fireworks in a downtown building that burned down the entire downtown of a community because it just spread from building to building to building. And so even if you go into a vacant building, you know, if you had a vacant tenant space at Midstate Plaza, that might not be suitable just because it's in such close proximity to other businesses and uses. So the idea...
You have a free standing...
Yeah. But even... I looked at that too from the standpoint that, you know, what if I had a trailer or portable building that was specifically set up? But most of what's being done in the state of Kansas does limit it to tents and canopies, and that's driven partially by fire code considerations. So this is not carved in stone yet, but our thought is just for being able to manage and not have one impact, a future one, that no matter how large the site might be, and by zoning lot, we mean that, you know, Midstate Plaza is a single zoning lot. So we wouldn't expect to have four stands at Midstate Plaza or four at the corner of Ninth and Cloud or something like that. It would be first come, whoever gets an arrangement with the property owner and gets their plans approved would be allowed on that zoning lot, and there would be no others. We're suggesting that the setback from any public street, in other words, if you were at Ninth and Cloud and you were setting up a tent there, that that be set back at least 50 feet from any public street. We have seen ordinances that have a distance determined from the tent to any dwelling. The alternative to that would be to say any residential district or any residential lot line. So there's two ways to look at that. If you look at... If you look at the east side of South Ninth Street where you have commercial lots and then you have houses on Highland backing up to that, there's two ways. You could look at that either measure from the sales tent to the property line or measure from there to the dwelling, but we're suggesting 100 feet, and in some cases, it might be easier to administer if this said any residential property line as opposed to the dwelling. We're suggesting that the tent be located at least 50 feet from any other structure on the zoning lot or an adjoining zoning lot. So again, if we used our example of Ninth and Cloud, you've got the main building there with Genesis Health Club and Big Lots and that there, but at the south end, you have the suburban appliance, which is in pretty close proximity. So we would want to see that the tent or canopy is, we would be measuring not just to the main building there, but also to the suburban building on the adjoining lot, keeping it 50 feet away, 20 feet from any property line if you didn't have buildings in close proximity. And this is something that is fire code-driven, and that is keeping the area for parked vehicles more than 10 feet away from a stand, again, because of vehicles containing fuel and fireworks are obviously combustible, and the goal is to keep separation. The ordinance does allow for vendors to have like a storage container or unit that they could come in, like a metal storage container or cargo container, and so at the end of the night, they have a cash register or they have extra merchandise that they want to have on hand and secure it. They could move it into the storage container, padlock it, and have that secure. So that would be permitted. The ordinance says the maximum size for that's 120 square feet. We're suggesting that that be maintained at least 20 feet away from the tent or canopy. We only want locations that have access from a public street from an approved curb cut. We wouldn't want to be on a grassy lot sitting on a street with no curb cut or no ability to get up there and expect people to park on the street or jump the curb. And we also are suggesting that it needs to be on a site that has surplus parking and not a tight site. If you put up a 2,400-square-foot tent, it's going to occupy a number of parking spaces, and we don't want to create problems for existing businesses or customers of existing And so we're suggesting using a ratio of one space for 200 square feet. So if you had a 1,000-square-foot tent, that would be five spaces, 2,000 would be 10. But in no case would a property have less than five off-street parking spaces that are paved for their customers. This is part we may want to have some discussion on. We're suggesting that if you set up a tent, you'd be allowed to place a single banner sign on the exterior of the tent to advertise your fireworks stand, and then one ground sign not exceeding 32 square feet on the same lot. Signs could certainly be illuminated, but we don't want flashing signs. And we also are trying to address through there the off-premise signs, so we wouldn't want a situation where somebody sets up a stand and then they put out 50 signs out at the median at Magnolia and Ninth Street directing people to their stand. So that would put people on notice that we don't want off-premise advertising signs placed in the right-of-way. We're also suggesting in there that these stands not be allowed to have human signs that would be out in the public right-of-way and waving people into their stand from the street. So the only thing we might want to address there a little more specifically would be the inflatables, either whether you do or don't think that that's a good idea to have a 40-foot inflatable gorilla at my stand. So I think if that's a good idea, then we should specifically include it. If you don't think that's a good thing, then we should probably call that out and exclude that we don't want inflatable temporary signs or balloons. We're suggesting that the hours be restricted to 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., that there be a person 18 years of age or older present at all times. Our suggestion is that if you're set up in a remote location where no active business on the site, that you should have a portable restroom, because if you have employees or people there working from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., there ought to be a place for a restroom. And if you're set up in front of Sam's Club and you've got an arrangement with them that allows your employees and customers to go inside and use their restrooms, then that would be an acceptable alternative. We would want to see a plan for waste disposal and trash containers. We would expect that the... Everything would be taken down and inventory and all removed by July 7th, and we would expect everything that's on the site to be cleared and removed. And I think we would... Our anticipation is that once these become set up, that it would be a team effort between the police, fire department, and the planning department to periodically inspect the consumer fireworks operations for compliance, make sure things don't move or get added or anything of that nature. And the way the ordinance is set up, the city manager may revoke or suspend a permit if there's somebody operating in violation, or somebody sets up a stand that they don't have a permit for at all. They could be shut down. We think one of the most important parts is we're going to have to get... There are so many different separation requirements, and we're going to have to get good site plans that are done to scale that accurately depict what's there. So we've gone into pretty large detail about... We want to know the location and size of the tent. We want to know the distance from that tent to the nearest public street, to the property lines, to other structures. We want to know where fire extinguishers or other firefighting apparatus are going to be located. We want to see how and where parking is going to be handled, and if power's available, we want to see how power will be furnished to the tent, and if not, I think most of our places should have power, but certainly in some of the rural locations or fringe locations, they've got to have a generator. And if you have a gasoline or diesel-powered generator, then we don't want that real close to the fireworks stand either. So a lot of this is really fire prevention and fire spread-driven, and we're trying to be quite clear that if you submit a fuzzy application, it may get delayed or it may get just not approved if we can't confirm some of this information. We want to see written permission from the business or property owner, information about whether people can utilize the public restrooms on the site. We would want to see a copy of a sales tax certificate and a... Each tent that's manufactured has something from the manufacturer that deals with the flame retardant treatment for the tent, and that is one of the reasons for limiting it to tents, because there are manufactured tents that are very flame-resistant, and then proof that the vendor has general liability insurance, and the coverage amount is $1 million. So that is a summary of some of the requirements that we're suggesting, and then, John, if you could flip to that, the proposal for the review. This will need to be fleshed out a little bit, but the plan that has been set up is that the application, which I believe, Alyssa, they have that at their place there, so we prepared a two-page application that covers a lot of the things that we've addressed in our presentation here. That application gets filled out and filed with the city clerk's office with the site plan attached. The city clerk will forward that out to the fire department and planning department for review, and if all these requirements are met, then we would sign off on that and return it back to the city clerk for issuance of the permit and collection of the permit fees. But the fire department's going to be reviewing the site plan and looking at all the distances. They're going to look at the size of the tent, and if there's any additional information they need about the tent itself. They're going to review the certificate of flame resistance. We're going to make sure that we know what the current zoning is of the property, that it is zoned appropriately for a consumer fireworks facility, make sure we understand what the legal description and the extent of the property is, make sure we have the property owner's written consent, and then we're going to review the site plan, and if there are setback requirements that aren't adhered to, then we will send that back to the applicant to rework. And we've added the note that we will use the city's risk manager to review the certificate of insurance and make sure that it provides adequate coverage or protection. So that is our summary of what we're proposing, both for ground rules and the process for reviewing these. This is all brand-new to staff, both fire department and the planning department, so we're going to have to learn as we go. But as I said, a couple of our discussion points that we would like input from you on is whether you think those distances are appropriate, whether downtown C-4 should just be ruled out altogether, whether you'd rather have a separation measured from the dwelling on a property or the residential property line. And then we were going to, as we looked at this and tried to think of everything, we looked at the fact that Dylan's Superstore and Sam's Club have fueling facilities out there, and it would probably be a good idea to have a minimum separation. And I think the NFPA fire guidelines was 50 feet, and we were thinking more 100 or 150 would be more appropriate. So that, in our various setbacks that we had there, we did not include that in there, but if you had some thoughts about distance from any fueling facility and including that and what the appropriate amount would be, we would entertain any comments or feedback you have in that direction. So our role here today is not to second-guess whether it's a good idea to sell and possess fireworks, but to see if we are going to get into that on a city side of things, that we have understandable and enforceable ground rules in place. And our thought was to... That you want to set up at South High, we're sorry, that's not zoned correctly, or a church parking lot, so we're trying to focus on just the commercial areas, ones that have abundant parking and lots of open area to set up in. And so that is the area that we're trying to push these to. But I think... I'm hard-pressed to think of a great C-4 location, so it may be just appropriate to drop that out and limit it to C-3, C-5, C-6, and C-7. And our C-7s are mostly out close to the interstate at Crawford and North Ninth and places like that. So probably C-3 and C-5 would be the most common areas, your Ace Hardware parking lot or your Ninth and Cloud or locations like that. So I'd be open to any questions you have about specifics of the ordinance, and we do have... Is this Mr. Weinbrenner? Yes, Mr. Weinbrenner has been following this closely and is interested in perhaps setting up a stand, so we would welcome any input he has on this as well.
Any questions? Dean?
I might ask, are you aware of any... I mean, where other communities have allowed this, has it created any particular problems you're aware of, or has it went fairly well?
I think what the experience has been, and I think I put in your packet a copy, I think it was an article from the Topeka paper, and what they found was that when it first started, everybody thought that they wanted to get in the fireworks stand business, and then it tapered off. And I think there's two things that are going to limit it. One is the application and permit fees are pretty steep, and two, you're limited to one facility, we're suggesting, per zoning lot. So that's... You're going to have to be pretty serious about knowing what you're doing and wanting to do it to set that up. So I can't speak to the discharge side of things and keeping things within hours and within reason. My personal experience, I think there was a notat- My personal experience, I think there was a notation in there that they couldn't be discharged after 10:00 PM, and my experience is that's when it usually starts. So, but we can certainly regulate the sales to terminate it at 10:00 PM. But I have not, in any of the research we've done, not seen, what seems to be repeated over and over is that you've got to have a very good site plan, and you can't use the back of a napkin to lay out your stand and everything, you're going to have to have real dimensions and everything to address that. And it's probably even, you know, one step above this, but this is just an example of all the different kinds of dimensions. Here's, you know, I've got this gas dispenser over here, and we're suggesting that it probably needs to be 150 feet away from there, and they're showing 100 feet from property line to the street, property line, and 100 there, we're suggesting 50. And then, we need to know the distance here, and we need to know how many parking spaces we can get around that. And then, if we're going to maintain a 10-foot separation between parking and the tent, we're going to have to look at barriers and things like that. So I think what will make it go smoother is we work with an applicant, they tell us our location, we're probably going to pay a site visit with them, and try to pick out the best place to set it up. And then, we're going to set up the tent, and get everything set up, and do a pre-inspection, and then say, you're good to go, start bringing in your merchandise. And make sure, you know, if a portable restroom is needed, we've got to make sure it's there. If we need a 10-foot separation from the tent to any parked vehicles, we need, there's something out there. And so, I think the key will be the pre-inspection.
One more question, if I may. You probably went over, and I probably just missed it when I read this, but discharge is, can you discharge fireworks in the area where they're sold?
No, it's not addressed in here, it is addressed in the other, and there's a prescriptive distance on that. And I think in your packets, you have the adopted local ordinance, and I'll see if I can find that in the, there's a, no use of consumer fireworks shall be permitted within 100 feet of a consumer fireworks facility. And so, what we're planning to do is, we have this draft ordinance that you're looking at, we have the application, two-page application there. We're going to work on a, probably it's going to be a four- or five-page application instructions manual, that we're going to put a sample site plan in it, and checklist, and we're going to put a, some of these things like, that we haven't addressed in our ordinance, but no smoking shall be allowed within 50 feet of the facility, a readily-visible sign reading fireworks for sale, no smoking allowed, shall be displayed at the facility. Those are things that'll be inspection items, but I don't think we need to necessarily address on the zoning side.
I think most of that could be handled administratively, but does everybody agree with like, the C4, drop that, and the property line instead of the dwelling? Everybody's kind of in agreement of all that? And the gas pump?
I think the sign should just be the same as all of those other zoning classes.
Yeah, if somebody has a new business, and they're having a grand opening, and they want to bring in a inflatable gorilla, and put it out there for their grand opening, they can do that for the first 21 days they're open, or we've seen hot air balloons, or different things like that. But that is the only circumstance where those type of things is allowed. So, if that nice illustration that John had there of the, I think this is inflatable firecracker, or something, if your thought is that those type of temporary decorative signs should not be permitted. I just think that this type of thing is going to be tough. We're suggesting that you can have one banner that you put out there. If you think that's too restrictive, then, you know, we could say one banner per side, or whatever you think is appropriate. We're just trying to get ground rules established upfront, so then it doesn't become a chase in your tail, as far as enforcement.
It's such a short amount of time, that I think enforcement, we should do whatever, it's kind of like the Wild, Wild West. I don't mind if there are the banners there, it's not something that, I mean, if I don't mind, just imagine.
The no trees are.
Yeah, exactly. So, I just, it's such a short amount of time.
So, if we said that they would be permitted to allow, or have banner signs on the exterior of the tent, as opposed to saying one, just say that signage may consist of banner signs mounted to the tent, and a single ground sign?
That's all right with me.
Yep.
What about the empty lot at, is it Ashen Santa Fe?
The City Hall.
Yeah, the difficulty with that is that, one, it's predominantly grass, and second, where would you park and get good access to that?
Still an alley through there, isn't there?
Yeah. But basically, you'd have people parking in the grass, or something like that, instead of having paved parking available to them. But that would be a judgment call for your recommendation. Like I said, as we've looked at it both ways, and it's hard, it's hard to come up with a location in the C4 area that's really suitable. So, I mean, you could say it's okay, and then nobody could come up with a location anyway, or you could say, gee, we just don't think this fits in the downtown.
And is that, by allowing C4, and if nobody can come up with one, does that serve any liability purposes? Is somebody going to come up and say, that's not fair, because here's one spot that we didn't think about, and then we have to reverse it, or back down, so to speak? I mean, if the general conditions are acceptable, and all we're saying is, we just can't think of one, as long as there's regulations, and if they can find a spot?
Yeah, if they can find a spot and comply with all these things, then you have to...
Which may be impossible in that area.
Right. Then you'd have to say, well, fireworks stands are just inherently incompatible with the downtown setting, and I'm not sure that, you know, that is the case. And then, there are other, like where Sonic is, and the Masonic Temple, and things like that, are actually C3 and not C4. So, most of our C4, the areas where you have open or surface parking lots, is our city-owned lots. But I don't have a strong feeling either way. If you said C4 was acceptable, then if somebody can meet the criteria, then more power to them. Or if you just think fireworks stands in downtown don't fit together at all, then there's no reason to even open that door.
Do we have any input from the Downtown Association?
Not a whole lot, but we could certainly, if you made a recommendation to include it before this was finalized by the city commission, we would alert them to that, and ask them to weigh in on that. But, it's just that, just because we can't think of a spot, doesn't mean somebody else can't.
Well, and if the theory is, this is just the sale, well, it's not a theory, this is just the sale, and no discharge, then I don't particularly see an issue with the downtown area, unless somebody can point to it. I just don't want somebody to come up and say, well, that's not fair, here's one spot here, and one spot there.
Other than the fire hazard, but...
They only have to go 100 feet away from it.
Well, but again, don't the rules and regulations...
Yeah, we would lay the grid over the site, and you'd have to maintain all these separations, and if you can.
And you get, I mean, there's lots of things, it's a more compacted, more compacted area.
It would certainly be more of a challenge.
Yeah, but I think there, if they don't have any problems with it, then I would agree with Commissioner Burtson.
Well, this is a public hearing, so if any in the public would like to speak, you could step to the podium, name and address, and lighten us on fireworks.
Okay. Ed Weinbrenner, I own and operate Crazy Ed's Fireworks.
You know, for yourself, it's scary. Crazy Ed's.
I had to come up with a catch name.
Okay.
Mike knows me a little bit, he knows I'm not too bad, so. One thing I would address, I know you said that no discharge of fireworks within 100 feet?
Yes, the adopted...
I believe the state is 300 feet.
But, the city can take any NFPA or state standard, and they can be more restrictive than that. And they chose 100 feet, but if you think that it's on a state, that's actually less restrictive, so we would want to take a look at that, if you think that's in fact the case. But the way the ordinance is drafted is it says, no use of consumer fireworks shall be permitted within 100 feet of a consumer fireworks facility. So, if you think that's something that we need to double-check, we will do that.
Well, it's, you know, if the city wants to say 100 feet, you know, that's fine.
I don't think we can be less restrictive than state law.
I don't want anybody shooting fireworks around my stand, you know, than 100 feet, but, most of them are pretty safe, though, at that distance. And your concerns about the downtown area, most cities that I deal with does not allow fireworks to be sold in the downtown, what they consider the downtown corridor. And because of, you know, the safety regulations and everything. And myself, I want to be sitting somewhere where there's a lot of traffic. And, you know, there is, you know, not a whole lot of traffic in, not as much traffic as there used to be in downtown, but...
So you're saying downtown corridor, which is different than a zone?
Well, what I consider like your downtown corridor would be from, oh...
But Sonic is being downtown.
North Street, yeah, North Street down to Crawford, you know, something like that. And then, east to Ohio, and, you know, that way. But, you know, the city can, you know, they can do whatever they want, you know? But, one thing, now, I don't know if it has anything with you, but it was saying just fire extinguishers, are they going to require a certain type and size of fire extinguisher? Has that been covered? I've never seen anything, and I was just concerned about that.
That's probably going to be covered in the inspection checklist that the fire department comes up with. What we're seeing, in just in terms of our submittal requirements, and somebody brings in their site plan or diagram, we want to see what provision has been made for locating fire extinguishers, or other equipment that might be there. That's something that the fire department will look at. But as part of our application materials and all, and the inspection checklist, I think we'll get input from the fire department on what, if there's a minimum rating or size for that, then we'll make that as part of the inspection checklist.
Okay.
In the other cities that you deal with, do they have to have fire extinguishers?
Yes, yes.
Because it seems like hoses, that could be real time-sensitive, to get water turned on, and then...
Well, also, there's a lot of fireworks that you can pour water on them, and it's not going to do a bit of good. And because of the green fuses and stuff, they're waterproof. Because we saw firecrackers that you throw in water, and, you know, they go off. Lot more fun than just regular firecrackers, so...
And crazy, too.
Yeah, but, you know, the state says you can have fire extinguishers, hose, or a water bucket. You know, that's, you know, that's back in the 1800s, but, fire extinguishers are what I use. And the county, when we set up in the county, they was requiring us to have 20-pound ABC fire extinguishers. I don't know if any of you have ever lifted a 20-pound ABC fire extinguisher, but they're too heavy for the person to be picking up and trying to use to fight a fire. So, they've changed that this year to 10 pounds.
So, the county does require a fire extinguisher at every stand?
Oh, yeah. Yes, they do, two of them. They require two of them, so. And, I mean, that's requirement anywhere.
And a special type?
Well, it has to be, you know, an ABC is a universal fire extinguisher, it covers wood, you know, or grass, paper, you know, electrical, so, gas, stuff like that, so that is...
How many feet from a fueling station do you find?
I was, I was thinking the county, on theirs, they was requiring 300 feet, I think, from a fueling station, or a hazardous material, like a, you know, bulk fertilizer plant, or something like that. And, so, I think the farther away, the better, myself. But I appreciate your time, and if you have any other questions for me, or whatever.
Any questions?
Do you think most of, you talked about the discharge thing, do you think most of the separations from other uses that we have are reasonable?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, your setbacks and everything, they're fine. I think everything's good there.
How about in terms of signings? We were talking about the, basically, no limit on the number of banners, as long as they were attached to the tent, but one additional sign that could be out in the front yard area to identify the stand, is that pretty consistent with what you've experienced elsewhere?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, the county's the only place that I've had to limit signs, and they had strict, you know, or supposed to have had strict guidelines on signage. And, but a four-bait banner is, that's pretty good, that's sufficient, as far as that. And then, your banners, like you was talking about, on your tent.
Okay.
I think that's all pretty good.
Yeah, I was reading some material I had here, it had a, that each facility had to be provided with at least two fire extinguishers, with a minimum rating of 2A, which must be clearly visible.
Right.
And so, that, based on the size of most of the tents, I think we're looking at at least two fire extinguishers. But again, we're trying to, we're trying to merge the two interests of both the fire department and the zoning side of things, and not, what we'll end up with is a application packet that will summarize all these things, but will include things from the fire department as well, so.
Right. And do you have any idea when they're going to be coming out with this packet, how soon?
Well, what will happen here is that this will be a recommendation that will go to the city commission. This will be put into ordinance form, based on what the planning commission recommends. And then, our plan would be to have a ordinance, an application packet, and an application form, ready for the city commission to review all at once, hopefully by the end of this month.
Okay, very good.
Find out people have, start making plans and getting their locations, so.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you need a recommendation, or a motion to do this, with all the changes?
Yeah, John, if you could go back to the text of the ordinance? Yeah, John, if you could go back to the, uh, the text of the ordinance. I think what we would, uh, like to do, and just, we can, Dustin and I can take notes on each of these and just kinda go by and see that. I guess we would wanna see whether the majority of the commission thought about just, 'cause when you look at the, uh, the development pattern and the density of buildings and things like that, there's a lot of things that make downtown not suitable. At the same time, we respect Mr. Birdsong's thought that if we haven't thought of everything, you know, if, if you can't find a site that meets the criteria anyway, it's gonna be self-regulating, but we would want.
We found Mr. Weinbrenner's comments that that's a fairly common thing to, to restrict. I'm, I'm fine with that. If everybody else is comfortable with taking C4 out, I'm, I'm okay with that.
So, we would probably strike this and limit it to these four districts. If you're comfortable with the one stand per zoning lot. What we may wanna add here, I guess, based, and it maybe it could be even greater if, based on Mr. Weinbrenner's comment, we were suggesting 150 feet from any fueling facility, but if you think 200 or 300 feet gives you a better comfort.
I think it'd fall in line with the county's.
Mm-hmm.
With the state's requirement. Is it the state?
At the state, if the state's.
Well, the state dealt with discharge within 300 feet.
Well, that's true.
And we're, again, we're, we'll try to address that in our, our handout materials and our, our signage. But, uh, we're, we're basically gonna have two types of signage that we're gonna be dealing with. We're gonna have safety signage about no smoking and parking of vehicles and, and things like that, that are gonna have to be posted. And then we'll, we'll have the advertising signage. So, if you could, are you, uh, pretty comfortable with the, the minimum, no matter what your size of stand, that you've gotta have at least five spaces? And the one that's accessible? And then we would have a sliding scale. As the tent got larger, then the number of spaces would have to get larger. So, 2,000-square-foot tent would be, um, 10 spaces, and the maximum size would be 12.
But back up to, uh, C, I think there was a question about residential property line or dwelling.
On number two.
Yeah.
On number two, is a, you think, I think from administrative standpoint, it would be easier just to say, "Let's measure to the property line and keep a certain distance," if you're in agreement with that. And, uh, if, if you have a distance or number in mind for the fueling facility, then we would plug that into item C as well. And then, from what I took from the discussion was that you didn't see a need to put a numerical limit on banner signs, but everyone seemed to seem to think it was reasonable to have a single ground sign out in the front yard to advertise.
And excluding inflatables or not?
I thought it was a size issue. It's not really whether it was inflatable or not, but if it was a, within the four, that's what I.
Well, we, the, uh, we would, we would put the, what the, John had there, the inflatable fire cracker would be considered a decorative sign. It wouldn't be considered a ground sign. A ground sign might be one of those four-by-eight temporaries or whatever that you would put up. So, if, in other words, if I'm a business today, I can put a banner up on the face of my building or a fence, and I don't have to get a permit for it. And, so, it, a ground sign would be a sign that you would normally get a permit for to, to put up. The inflatables just kind of happen. They're like the flags and the other things. But I guess, we've, we've tried to address by saying you can have a lighted sign, but not a flashing sign. So, I guess, and we've tried to address having a person in the Uncle Sam outfit out at the curb waving people in. So, I guess the only thing that we would, we would wanna address would be the weather, uh, inflatables or balloons or things like that, whether they should be allowed or not allowed, or one per site, or how, how you think that should be done.
I guess anything can be dangerous, but the inflatables could be a further danger, I suppose, in case of fire or explosion. But I'm not crazy about the inflatable situation.
Would those be allowed for, uh, the fruit stands and the markets?
Nobody else would. The only, the only time you can do that's if you're a brand-new business and you're having a grand opening, but.
There's a lot of difference, really.
Yeah, well, we went, yeah, if, if Stutzman's wanted to have an inflatable over there, the answer would be no.
No.
I have one more question. Concerning, uh, inflatables. I know that, uh, was it Bennett's? They have this big balloon that they fly every once in a while, or are those allowed?
Oh, the thing that they put up like that? Yeah, they're not supposed to. We've, we've, we've deflated their gorilla before, but, um. I, I have, I have seen the, they're on a long, Womax had one of those the other day. They're on like a long tether, like a weather balloon type thing. Those are, those are no more permissible than an inflatable that's on the ground. But that, that's why we're having this discussion, because I would rather make it clear up front, have the Planning Commission and City Commission weigh in and say, "We don't want or expect to see those," or rotating searchlight, things like that. So, it's better, it's better to spell out what you don't want to see than to leave it to see what people come up with and then say, "Oh, well, we didn't mean to allow that." So, we're trying to think of inflatables, rotating searchlights, humans dressed like Uncle Sam, anything that might be an attention-getting device, and so that you can see what, what they ought to be limited to.
Okay, thank you.
But, but you, we could just say that no, no inflatable or, or balloon-type signs will be permitted at the site?
That's good.
And then, did you have a number in mind for a distance from any fueling facility?
300 feet.
300 feet, to be consistent with the county?
Was there an issue of, of the burn ban? At, at the beginning, you mentioned that in your information here, but I didn't see anything.
Again, um, what Mr. Bankson tried to do was to follow as closely as possible, um, what the county had, had done. There were some things that didn't fit because of the difference between the rural setting and the, the urban setting. But a lot of the things that were in here were, were tried to be modeled by, with the county's resolution that they passed, so it was consistent. So, I think the burn ban has a lot more to deal with, the discharge. But obviously, if, if we're gonna have a ban on discharge because of a burn ban, then we wouldn't probably be issuing permits for stands.
Well, and you said in other places, if there's a burn ban, you cannot sell fireworks.
Right.
Yeah, so the existing ordinance states that if the governor or the Board of Commissioners issues a ban on open burning in an area including the city, there shall be no offer for retail sale or retail sale of consumer fireworks, and there shall be no use of consumer fireworks during the time of the burn ban. So, if we're in a drought situation or dangerous situation, nobody would be able to set up a stand.
Okay.
Our applic, if, if that should happen, sometimes those aren't announced till slightly before when the stand. Are the application fees refunded then in that case?
I think that would be a decision for the governing body to make.
Could be expensive.
Yeah, it could be quite an investment. I mean, you wouldn't just have the fees, but you'd have the inventory and all that, so.
It's a risk we take to be in business, I guess, so.
So. So, the, the notes I have is C4 is out. We would wanna add a 300-foot separation for a fueling station. We're gonna measure distance to property line instead of dwellings. And, uh, banner signs are fine, but not inflatables or balloons or rotating searchlights.
And 300 feet from.
And 300 feet on the fueling station, and we're gonna look into the 300 feet on the discharge.
Okay, so, that's what we need to approve, if we have a motion?
Yeah, if we have a motion, would be to recommend the zoning ordinance be amended to add a new section for consumer fireworks facilities as amended.
I would make that motion, um, of application Z11-1 with the amendments that we just discussed.
We have a motion and a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Application passes.
So, for your benefit, Ed, this would be put into an ordinance form, and then go to the City Commission for their agenda, and hopefully have the, the informational application handout and the, uh, the application finalized, all, all for the City Commission to review.
No.
So, we got a, a single-issue focus here in our meeting today. But we will have a meeting again on, uh, March the 1st, which is Tuesday.
Did you ever see the article in?
Yeah, Cell Tower.
Cell Towers, this.
Oh, yes. We were gonna make a copy of that, and, uh, that just shows how the technology.
It's changed.
Changes. But it, it referenced the fact that, about downsizing the, the technology so that you could have, uh, more numerous switching points, but conceivably mount them on traffic signals or power light poles or things like that, and that they're, they're so small and miniaturized that they're barely noticeable. And the, I, I think the idea was that it could make towers obsolete, so.
You think that will happen?
It's in the journal, yeah.
It was in, uh, it was in today's, I think, Section B in today's paper. And I looked at it, but we were, we were gonna make a copy of it and include it in your next packets. It's mandatory reading material, so. But we plan to discuss at your next meeting the, uh, the public use district. That's a, that's a priority for us. And again, it, we would address municipal facilities, educational facilities, and then also, um, we've never quite been happy with the, uh, the, the zoning for the bicentennial center and the fairgrounds area over there. It, it would be more appropriate to have a, a public use designation for that area over there than it, trying to shoehorn it into the existing. Like, the, uh, the bicentennial center is zoned the same as Sam's Club because, and it was done that way because that was the only way they could get a cereal malt beverage license. And so, that's not a great reason to zone a property a particular way, but that, that's where those, uh, facilities were allowed, was the C3 district. So, the bicentennial center, under this ordinance, you could set up a fire stand, work stand over there if the city would let you, so.
And we're all waiting for the digital billboard issue?
Yes. And, uh, we told the gentleman in the industry that we're gonna let them initiate that. And so, I said, we had a meeting with someone who wanted to explore that possibility of, uh, he noticed there weren't any digital billboards in Salina, and we told him he was correct. So.
Any other matters? We're adjourned. Did, you know, I drove to Wetshaw this weekend, though, and I noticed that those cell towers are all over, going around 235. There's seven or eight you see there. I never noticed them before, but is that pretty?
You start looking.
Yeah. Is that pretty lucrative, though? I mean, do they, they pay pretty good rent, don't they?